Get started, I think Shanti will probably be down. Called to order the work session of the site plan review technical advisory committee for September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First up, we have forty-nine Chief Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the technical advisory committee, John Shagnon from Ambit Engineering. With me today is Jonathan Sobel, the property owner and applicant. And we're here as per the regulations that we come to review a proposed subdivision. This lot has a long history of back and forths and other such things, but I won't get into that. I'll just point out that it's a rather irregularly shaped lot. It has frontage on Chief Street. The lot then is rectangular on Chief Street, but then appended to that is another pretty much rectangular shaped part of the lot that has access from Custom House or Custom, no S., House Court. And the applicant is desirous of placing a dividing line that would come from Chief Street down along the existing building and then continue on to the rear of the lot. And that area between the new lot line slash forty-nine Chief Street building and the property line on the west, which is the adjacent structure at forty-three Chief, provides access, pedestrian access to the building that would remain on Lot One. So there's two buildings, or actually three buildings, on the existing lot. I don't know if there's a way to point if you.
There was a pointer, but I don't.
It disappeared. But is everybody following kind of where I'm talking about? No, yeah, it's kind of hard without a pointer. So.
Do you want me to point it out for?
I can point it with the mouse.
There you go. Peter will be the pointer man. Awesome. And we can, we can point that at that. Right, yeah, it's on a TV.
It won't explode, thank you.
Leave it on stun.
No.
Don't get Eric in the eyes.
All right, so going backwards a little bit so that we can, this is Chief Street. The lot has frontage on Chief Street and then comes over this way. It then comes back and jogs over here and jogs out here so that it has sort of not frontage, but access Custom House Court. And then comes back here, follows the building at forty-three. That's the existing lot. So it's kind of a unique shape, uniquely shaped lot. And the applicant wishes for estate planning purposes to subdivide the lot by placing a new ownership division line in this location. That allows for the access that exists now to the building in the rear. There's the sort of the front door and you access by walking here. Driving access is here with a two-car garage as a part of that structure. The forty-nine Chief Street building has pedestrian access and parking over here with a building in the back and a vegetated courtyard in the back behind the existing house, which you really would never know until you go there, but it's quite a beautiful backyard with mature trees. Is everybody clear on the, you know, there's a lot going on, on the plan, but those are the property lines and that's the proposal. The, we don't believe that there's any issues with the dividing line, given the zoning. CD four allows a zero side yard, so the new line doesn't create, in our opinion, any zoning nonconformities. There's no changes proposed to structures or utilities. We anticipate that we would be placing an easement in this part of that access as forty-nine does have a secondary egress here. There's a fence, but there's a gate. So we would anticipate putting an easement there. And if necessary, whatever utility easements might be required. But that's the proposal and we're looking for your feedback as we move forward through the process.
Go ahead, Shanti.
So, right now, that property line does not exist in that tiny little alleyway that will, where are you gonna need a, where are you gonna need an easement? To the left of Lot Two or to the left of number forty-nine?
Correct.
That property line now basically becomes the edge of that building.
Correct.
And is that building, is it a two-story wood frame? Which then, does it already have like a firewall? You know, in other words, is it rated? Because now we're gonna create a situation where it's literally on the property line and would not be able to meet the the fire protection rating that's required for being closer than five feet.
Yes. Yes, that's a good point. Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. And I think if we were going to put easements, then quite possibly it would be appropriate to put a no-build easement to the west of that building. So essentially, yeah, making it sort of accomplish the same thing. In other words, it'd never be a building that could be built there that would compromise what exists now for setback.
Number forty-three already exists.
Forty-three exists, yeah, and it's outside of the, the property line is the face of forty-three, so you have.
What's the distance between those two buildings, you know? I can't tell with a scale.
Three and a half feet.
Three five five four.
Yeah, three and a half at the street and then it widens as it goes back, yeah.
Right, right, right. But now they're all on one lot?
No, not the, no, forty-three's on a different lot, yeah.
That wouldn't change anything, but.
Right.
Peter, are there any minimum frontage requirements in CD four?
No. Is it Custom House Court or Custom House Lane? RGIS has Custom House Lane. If you want to just confirm with Jamie McCarty if.
Lane is not correct.
Lane is not.
They, they went over this once before. It is, in fact, Custom House Court. That is the correct nomenclature. It's been recorded. The actual sign at the end of the street says Lane, I think, L-N.
Yeah, must.
But it's not correct.
Because that's what our map geo says Lane as well.
Does the tax map say Lane too?
I'm not sure.
Take a look. I thought it said Court, but.
I thought we were gonna change it to Turnpike.
Yeah, the tax map says Court, so.
Good. Then you got the right name.
Utilities for Lot One.
There is gas. Right, that comes up that pedestrian way.
There is gas and water that come up through the pedestrian way. And the electrical line comes down the side of Custom House Court from Penn Hallow.
In the sewer.
And the sewer actually goes straight down Custom House Court to the first sewer hole in Custom House Court.
So the water service is in the little tiny alley?
The water service comes down underneath this walkway here.
Yes. It's in the, we're calling that.
How come I don't see a water shut-off for it on the survey?
That's a very good point. The water shut-off for this is to the house Lot Two. And that's part of the mechanical reciprocal easement for maintenance. When we originally built Lot One as a garage, we went to the city and asked for a dual meter setup. And they said that they would not put a dual meter because it was one lot. I said, well, someday there's gonna be two lots. And they said, no. So right now, there's just one meter going into Lot Two and it splits. And then there's a secondary meter to, just for us internally to control which house is using how much water. And it pops out the side here and goes underground, up the walkway and into the building.
Yeah, so Jonathan, if it was a condo, we'd probably allow that, but it's not a condo. You're proposing a separate lot, so we're probably gonna need a separate tap at the street.
So we'll have to do a new water service to the rear building? We can show that.
And a question, could we do the new water service in front of the Chief Street House rather than in front of the walkway?
No, it's gonna have to go on the lot. So it's gonna have to go up the walkway. It's gonna be on the lot.
The reason, the reason I ask that is that in that walkway, it's a radiant heated walkway.
I know there is. It's coming.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So there's a lot of utilities already built into the walkway, including the existing water line.
Somehow free and clear and not on Lot Two in any way, shape or form, you need to put a water service in.
And, and as an alternative, there is an easement.
It can't go through the building in any way.
Right. The, just looking ahead for Lot One, it has an easement on the brick walkway to Daniel Street. Would that be another access point to go for water, to go down there?
If the easement includes the ability to put a water service in it, then possibly. Option two is to put a water line down Custom House Court. Or option three is to terminate the line where it's currently going into the house and then extending that pipe to Chief Street for a new tap to the main and then moving the meter into Lot One somehow. Also, if there's no license from the city council for the heating system for the sidewalk, that should be dealt with now and should be acquired through the city council.
Oh, the sidewalk in the city street in front of your house is heated?
No, it was, the, the heating system does not extend into the city-owned property. Remember, we cut it off. We terminated it.
Okay, I remember that now, okay.
And then it leaked. Yeah, I know. I sealed it all up and then it started leaking, so, but we fixed it eventually.
Okay, so somehow you need to deal with the water service. I don't know what your plan's gonna be, but you need to show us that.
Well, I think the answer is to, the simple answer is to simply bring it straight in from Chief Street and we'll redo the walkway.
Okay. In addition, we, we were looking at a maintenance easement for Lot Two, which, and we've already discussed the easement for Lot Two for the fire. But also for maintenance of Lot Two, the side of the building for Lot Two. It's gonna be necessary.
Weren't we thinking of like a reciprocal easement between the two for mechanical and, you know.
Access, maintenance.
Yeah, it just needs to list all the appropriate things. Please.
Now, all of a sudden, Lot Two needs to reside their home and forty-three says, no, I don't want you on my property. And we've seen that.
Right.
So that's right, a good project.
It's in it.
Is there no, no main door on the Custom House Court side of the building? That would be on Lot One, just.
On the garage side, there is a door.
There's, there's a door that enters the brick walkway to Daniel Street. So there is a pedestrian access from Daniel Street to Lot One. Then there is a vehicular access on Custom House Court. And then there is the passenger or pedestrian entrance that we've depicted here that goes to Chief Street. So there's really three different ways you can get in.
But this lot has rights to walk through the alley that is to the right of the restaurant on Daniel.
And where are the doors for that building that's on Lot One? What would be on the new Lot One?
The, the door on Lot Line on the brick pathway to Daniel Street is sort of centered on the.
So it's over here?
Yes, it's right there. It's centered right there. It's a thirty-six inch door.
And then there's a door here.
And that's a thirty-six inch door right there.
How many units?
There are.
In Lot One?
In Lot One, there are two units that were assigned to it.
So two, there's two dwelling units in there?
Yes.
And can you get to either dwelling unit from either door or is one served by the door off of the path from Daniel or one from the Chief?
You can get to both units through both locations.
So there's a corridor or something?
There's a central corridor hallway. And the hallway is four feet wide.
So I'm assuming this would have a Custom House Court address if we were to do this for Lot One?
You know, that's an interesting question. When we originally went to designate this, they insisted that we have a Chief Street address for Lot One. That was the nine-one-one designation. So I don't know how you change that, but if you want it changed to Custom House Court, we'll be glad to change it. And, and just again, in terms of your concern, Lot One, that building is sprinkled and it also has, the entire interior has a one-hour firewall rating. And that was because of the garage downstairs. We just decided to use one inch everywhere.
Sorry, we're just, we're just trying to figure out what the front and rear yards are because there is three-foot rear yards set back to pit. And we're trying to make sure we understand that, is it a new nonconformity that would require variance or is it an existing nonconformity? And we're trying to figure out if it's addressed off Chief Street, then the current rear yard remains the rear yard. And it looks like it has a tiny bit of frontage off Chief Street, so that it would be just an existing nonconformity. Shifts to Custom House Court, I can't remember because we have had, this has been going round and round about. But does that become the primary front, frontage and that becomes now the front yard and does it flip it? And now you have a new nonconformity in, in the, in the rear.
Different rear.
Yeah, different rear. So, yeah. I mean, as it is right now, I mean, just something to think about, as it is right now, it sounds like it's, you're saying that it's been, that Lot One has already been addressed off Chief Street?
Yes, that is correct, the nine-one-one.
And it looks like you're retaining a sliver of frontage there, so.
Yes.
And access, pedestrian access, yeah.
I think that's the right thing. It's an existing nonconformity, but if it switches to a different rear yard, then it's now a new nonconformity.
No, it's staying the same. At the time.
I think it is staying the same right now, the way it's proposed, yeah.
Right. And, and it's just by chance that they insisted that we call this forty-nine B and forty-nine A Chief Street.
Okay.
They insisted on it. So there you go.
Okay. We're gonna go with that.
The fire department was asked because we would have very much opposed that decision. I, I walked down there before this meeting to figure out where this building was. And it's on, that building would access from Custom House Court.
For firefighting.
For firefighting. Now, does the nine-one-one address in the end make a difference as to what's, to the front yard or the backyard?
That's what we use? Yeah.
To me, it should clearly be a Custom House Court address, but.
That's what I said ten years ago.
So I don't, the question is, will Jamie want, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to upset the app car. Because it seems like it's kind of working, but will Jamie require a new address for it based on the subdivision? Or will it just retain its previous address since I just, the question now that it's being subdivided?
We had assumed that it would continue to be forty-nine A and forty-nine B.
Because they're, they're already addressed separately. There's the.
Yeah, so, so we're essentially not changing anything except, I guess, the water line. That's the one thing that will change.
So the discussion of the addressing before, I'm assuming, was with it on the same lot, correct? Like, it wasn't part of a subdivision conversation because I know that.
That's right.
They do not like using A and B. I was told they will not use A and B for separate lots in the city.
You know, just as throwing one more thing into the discussion, Jay Smith owned all of these properties at one time. And so this was originally his house. And he was, while he was rehabbing this house, he was living over here and subsequently decided to add this to this house. So the lot line that we're re-establishing is pretty close to the original setup. So just, that doesn't mean anything, but.
Well, I mean, I think it all helps like to understand the context, but, so we usually have a stipulation that says, reach out to the assessor for interim lot and block numbers or confirmation of the proposed, and she'll assign interim lot block, map lot and block numbers, I think, probably not unlike what you have. And then also reach out to Jamie McCarty for, you know, just our confirmation of the addressing. And that will affect, I think, you know, our review to make sure we, I think, I don't know that he'll change it. I don't have any idea, but I think that's my.
I'll be reaching out to Jamie as well.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, so that, that would be though a fork in the road because if he decides that it needs a Custom House Court address, then.
Yeah, does it, does it change, yeah. Let me, let me follow up with you about that. I just wanted, before I say absolutely. I'm kind of inclined to say that, that it's, it's nonconforming right now as a rear yard and so we wouldn't ask any change in that. But if it, now it suddenly becomes, you know, nonconforming, it's not conform, yeah, we would just leave it. But if it now suddenly changes the front yard to a different location, then we would need to take a look and make con, confirm that. But my feeling is it might require variance.
Right.
But it's an existing structure, so I just have to look at our nonconforming language and make sure, you know, it's not like, you know, what are you gonna do if you don't get your variance, you know? So I just want to make sure, so.
Is it five feet on that rear?
It's three feet, it's three feet.
How far is the house from the back property line, the back?
It's, I don't think it's three feet.
Not quite three feet.
We're trying to make a straight line and.
There's a line.
I guess that would be an option if need be.
Not much, yeah.
Squiggle it over to three feet if need be, but we could make that choice, yeah.
Oh, you could move your lot line.
We're not trying to create hardship here.
Yeah, we just want to alert you to anything we see that might, we don't want you to have hardships either. That's not a variance anyone wants to see, but we want to make sure we, we, we understand that. And then just know that we're always gonna be looking for the, all the easements on a separate easement plan. If there's like three or more easements we want to see, it's on a separate plan.
Okay.
With the intent of the easements, clearly identify the, you know, grantors, grantees, and purpose of the easement. And then unique identifiers for each easement that correspond with the, with the table on the map. We're trying, it makes it go so much faster on the other side when we have that. The review goes much quicker. It's your, you get everything done a lot quicker that way.
I don't think there'd be any involvement of the city in the easement, so we wouldn't need council approval.
Okay, that's always good to kind, and then it kind of alerts legal and then we can, and then we can get those. It's, it's going quicker when we have those easement plans and we can kind of make sure that we're working with you early to get those moved forward. You can get those, because we're wanting all those easements prior to recordation. We've had a few problems with that.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that, I hate to harp on this, but, you know, so Lot Two was more conforming with respect to the separation for, setback for fire. We're making it less conforming by moving that property line over, but we're making, you're making forty-three more conforming because you're getting the property line further away from the, is that right?
Actually not, no, we're, we're leaving the property line where it is and we're adding a property line.
So that dark line that you just, you traced around with the pointer.
Yeah.
Is where the lot line.
Scroll up a little bit, Peter.
Because this, somebody else hopes this.
Exactly.
This is, this is the new line.
Doesn't change how far they're off of the property line, although.
So then who is gonna own, and then the, the dark line becomes the new line?
So here, it goes to Lot One.
Well, it's like a U. This dark line becomes a new line.
Sort of a pork chop.
Pork chop, yeah.
Three and a half foot pork chop. But I think if we.
Who owns the little block again?
Put that area between the two buildings into a Lot One no-build easement, then.
Well, who's gonna build on that thing anyway? It's only three feet wide.
Well, if somebody bought both lots and decided to rebuild on Chief, I don't know.
So they could sprinkle them and put a fire, you know, put a one-hour firewall and they'd be okay. Then it'll be in one fire area. Right now, we've got two separate fire areas under control of different owners, which is the reason, part of the reason for the fire code requirements. But actually, you're saying now that middle strip is, will be owned by neither, correct?
The strip between the buildings is gonna become part of Lot One, the rear building?
Yes, yeah.
But nothing about the way the buildings are now is changing.
Yeah, I got it, okay. All right. Less confused now.
Any other comments for now? So I, I guess if Lot Two decides to do something to their structure, then they would have to.
I mean, their, their property line is, will be established, so it's not like.
Yep.
You know, nothing's changing. I see that now, yeah, okay.
It was within five feet to start with, so it probably doesn't change much about the code. But if they wanted to redo the building, they might have to do something with the windows.
Yeah, and the siding, yes.
Yeah. Go, Sam?
Yes, I guess, yep.
Appreciate your feedback.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, next up, eighty-five Daniel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Chris Mulligan from Bozen Associates, here on behalf of Seaport Realty. The applicant, to my right is Mark Gianini, who is the project. And to his right is Lean Chaney, who's the principal of the ownership entity. This property was before the historic district commissioned a few months ago. And approvals were obtained to dormer both sides and to build a rear garage. And that's what, those plans we intend to incorporate into the redevelopment and convert the existing building into four residential units with the dormers and additional garage. And I guess I would have Mark kind of walk you through the plans at this point.
Sure. Mark Gianini from McHenry Architecture. The sheet that just got sent around is a revised proposed site plan with just a couple of minor changes that we'll go over in a second. But just briefly, the existing site plan. The front entrance has a stoop along Daniel Street with about approximately three-foot alleyways on either side of the existing building. In the rear, there is a slight bump out with a couple of decks or stoops, stairs, leading up to rear entrances as well as a partially paved parking area that's partly asphalt and partly gravel. That rear bump out is part of the proposal that was just mentioned that would get torn down and then we'd have a larger addition. So looking at the proposed site plan, most of the existing structure doesn't change footprint-wise. The orange part on the bottom of the sheet is the two-story, two-story garage addition that's proposed. There's a garage, two garage spaces. And the second floor above the garages are our living spaces and outdoor porch area. And then on the roof of that is a deck that we'll see in a moment. A couple, one of the changes on your updated plan here is we revised how many stair, steps that were needed for getting to the rear entrance there. So we only have three risers leading up to the landing, so it doesn't impede on the parking spaces. So in addition to the two garage spaces, we're showing a parking space on either side of the addition. Moving on to the next sheet, we've got general layout. Moving on to the next sheet, we've got general layouts of the interior. As Chris mentioned, where the previous owner had two units, or was intending to do two units, when we got HDC approval. At this time, we're doing, proposing four units. There's a, on the first floor, we have two one-bedroom units that have a live-work space along the Daniel Street side of the building. So that's what's labeled home office there, that are roughly a hundred, a hundred and forty square feet each. Behind that is, are the, are the one-bedroom units. And then we have a centralized corridor and stairway to provide access from Daniel Street to the rear garages. The color coding on here, as you'll see, if you go to the next page, the two garage spaces would be intended for the upper units. And then the one-bedroom units have a front door, as well as a rear door to access the, there are two spots in the back. So moving on to A two, A two and A three, these are two-story units, one on each side of the party wall. So they have living spaces on the second floor where you first enter, as well as two bedrooms and the covered deck off the back of the rear addition. And then the third story is where we're adding the dormers that were approved in the previous HDC submission. It gives us more living space for a master bedroom, master suite, as well as rear rooftop decks off the back of the addition. The next few pages are renderings that we did for the original HD submission. The Daniel Street facade doesn't change at all. And, and really, the intent when we went to the HDC was that most of the existing siding trim was all being repaired and replaced in kind. And then moving on from there, A five is just a different view on Daniel Street. And then if you go to the next page, A six and A seven, these are rear views of the addition. The only real change here that, from the HD, from this, what you're seeing here and what's proposed now is that rear door. In this image, it's showing going into the garage, but it would basically go in where that window is, behind the vehicle. And that would be the entryway on both sides, the secondary entryway into that first-floor unit. And you can see on A seven, aerial view of the addition, porches, decks, and garage. And again, on the left here, we would change that first-floor window on the left there into, into the entryway. In general, utilities, water is currently in, on Daniel Street. We'd be looking to add a fire sprinkler, so we'd be adding a secondary water service to the existing. Sewer is currently in Custom House Lane or Court, whatever we're calling it now. So that's going out the rear of the building. We might have, because of the proposed addition, we might be looking to relocate the sewer connection. There's also currently a utility pole that's on the, by the bottom-left corner of the property line. It actually shows up on the, it only shows up on the existing condition site plan. You'll see there's about three feet off the corner of the property, there's a current utility pole. Lane's been in conversation with Eversource to either relocate that pole or possibly bury lines back there. And I think in general, that covers the general overview.
All right, thanks. Are you, anything else, Chris, sir?
Yep.
I have a few questions. The, how are you gonna meet the egress requirement for the apartments?
The opers would have access to the stairwell, the central stair. And being sprinkler, you'd only need one egress in addition to windows and...
So you, there are exceptions where you would only need one egress, but, well, it looks like, is there a basement?
There is a basement, yes.
Can you access that from the hallway downstairs?
Uh, yeah, there's a, the intent is there'd be a central, under the central stair, there'd be another flight going down. On A one there, it shows a door that closes that off, but there's a stair that goes down to the basement.
Yeah, so for NFPA 101, to have a single exit, that whole corridor, as well as the stairs, would all have to be considered a stairwell? Would all have to be rated as a stairwell, and it could not provide access to the basement. It can't provide, the stair can't serve below the level of exit discharge in a single exit in an apartment. I think there's solutions around that, but as it is right now, it would not.
Okay.
The, the drawing showing doors into the garage?
Yes.
If there was somebody parked in that parking space, how would you...
It would be more of just a convenience door. So really, the, your access would be through the garage door itself or back through the building.
And the home offices are, there's no door going from the unit to them? They're separate?
On the left, there's a door that goes from the hallway into the home office, but, and the one on the right, well, on both of them, there's basically a French door that goes from the, to meet the live-work definition, we have to have access between the two, so they are connected.
Yep. So that is a French door? That, I was gonna ask.
Right, yeah, these... Yeah, the intent is either it's a French door or it's a sliding door, something. Yes, they would be connected to the live-work.
What would you say about the sewer being relocated?
Uh, right now, it goes out kind of the middle of the building, straight out to Custom House Lane.
Oh, it goes out back?
It goes out back. The water comes in from Daniel Street, the sewer goes out to Custom House Lane.
Oh, interesting.
Or at least, that's our assumption at the moment, based on looking, you know, at the basement.
Yeah. Okay, so if you're planning a sewer lateral, there is sewer out in the street in Daniel? But there's silver cells around the tree planter outside? So you should probably plan on coming out more or less in the middle of the building? Which is, is that where the sewer, the water is? I can't...
Yeah, it's not depicted.
Shut off.
It's not depicted on here. For some reason, the water line didn't show up, but...
Okay. And then you'd be out of your fire suppression line as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, is there a general size of the, the area under the, around the planter for that?
I think it's at least four feet from the edge of the, of the grill that's out there around the tree.
Okay.
What's M? Is that? Or is that a W? Water. Upside down, okay. So is he saying there's two water services right now?
Uh, where are you seeing the water service?
On sheet, site plan, sheet two...
Two of one?
Two of one, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the two of one, okay. Oh, oh.
There seems to be water lines on either side where it says Daniel Street.
Yeah, those are...
I haven't seen those.
I haven't seen it.
On the, in the road, in the road.
It's the forum, sanitary.
Right here.
Right next to the word is Daniel Street.
See the W?
Parking space at first.
Right on either side of Daniel Street? Oh, you know, that, that is a parking space, it's on a layer. And that's why it came through as water.
Oh, that's, yeah, on the older, older one.
It's not on the handout, it's only on the...
It's only on the original one, gotcha.
They fixed it. Yeah.
They fixed it, but...
Didn't tell you.
It didn't add water.
I think it might be a parking space.
Yeah, and, and they wrote it...
It's the parking space.
And it was on the water layer accidentally.
Yes, right, yeah.
So it's, there's no water line here, is that what?
Oh, there's a water line there, it's just not shown.
Is there a tree in that tree? Pitcher, in the picture, it looks like there's no tree, but is that because it's a rendering?
There is a tree there. Because it's a rendering.
Is it alive?
It's probably on the wrong layer. It was cut out.
I can see the corner of the grate, but I can't see the tree.
It was, it was cut out of the rendering, so it didn't impede on the building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
It's a lot easier to take the tree out than try to cut around the tree.
Yeah.
They'll be prepared to answer a question about why you're removing the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
In the, in the back on the site plan for that parking space next to the existing house, it looks like there's AC units on their wall. Be, how, how wide are those parking spaces?
I can't remember if they're, well, the, the city minimum, I can't remember, it was a nine...
Eight and a half, eight and a half.
Maybe nine feet. If they're not nine feet, they don't exist in reality.
Yeah.
When you come back, just so you know.
Yep.
Yeah, because you need to be able to open the doors, get it in.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll be talking to the neighbors about the AC units that...
It's like they're...
Over the popular hanging.
And how do you accommodate the, the reduction in steps to get back there?
Uh, it wasn't necessarily, it was a reduction only, we just showed more steps than we actually needed.
Oh.
It's twenty-eight inches, so we were able to get, uh, three risers there and then a step up the door.
It's a lot of big steps.
So is there any snow storage, or what are you guys gonna do about snow removal, especially in those parking spots, either side of the garage?
Well, the neighbor down the street has a hydraulic heating system that he's probably gonna be looking to sell.
Maybe we can tap into it, it's gonna dance. I don't know, we'll have to look at the snow storage, but obviously, it's tight, tight site, and it's a tight area in general.
So the open space is less than what's required? Is it, you gonna need a variance for that?
No. Oh. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't... It wasn't previously, I didn't check the numbers, to see what someone put down.
It says eight point six.
On the previous iteration, it was not an issue. But we can check that and get back to you.
Okay.
You said you guys were gonna put, what, sprinklers in it?
Correct.
So you may need a fire service then?
Yes. So we'd be looking to go out to Daniel Street to add a fire service?
So for the parking calculations, to get Unit A and B under five hundred, you, did you remove the home office?
We did remove the home office. In speaking with, with, with Nick about this, a couple, with the previous owner, and again, this, you know, he thought that there might be some wiggle room as well to help support trying to keep some sort of commercial, in this case, live-work use underground Florida, you know, activate the streets.
Right, I think you have to have, the bottom have to be, the bottom units have to be live-work. I mean, they couldn't all be fully residential.
Well, we could be an apartment building, I think, and that would, that would meet the zoning for use. But yes, the other option, like, with this and the previous design, was trying to keep some sort of commercial...
Right, before, it was only two units, right?
Correct.
Do the second-floor units have any access to the front door? It looks like the garage comes in and then directly to a landing for the upstairs. They don't have any access to that, that front door in the shared hallway downstairs?
Uh, they'd be coming down, if you start on the second floor, they'd be coming down. There's a shared stair on the side that says Unit D. Uh, there's a common hallway with a shared stair that goes down towards the landing, right in front of the two garage doors on the first floor.
Yep.
And then you would turn and go towards the hallway that takes you to the front.
Okay, I thought there were stairs there that headed to the basement. That's what that...
Uh, behind, that's behind the, the...
Oh, okay, that's a land, okay. Gotcha.
Because of the grade change, you come in, you come into a landing at the garage doors, or access to the garage, garages. And you, you go up to, or three risers, I guess, to get to the main floor.
Okay.
So one of the things that I don't know the answer to right now, is if a garage can open into an exit stairwell?
In an apartment-type situation.
It doesn't seem like it should be allowed, but I don't know, it's not?
Right.
Then the access to the basement is through those same stairs?
It's through the corridor, which by code is considered part of the stair, because until you're outside, you're in the stair, which... You know, you're into the stair on the second floor, and you're in the stair until you're outside, which means that they have to treat that entire corridor as an exit passageway or stair, which gets complicated. They can't have anything in there. And they can't put chairs in there, or any decorations, or anything, it's got, nothing, nothing can pass through that area that doesn't specifically serve the stairs. So sprinkler piping, electrical, it all has to, it complicates things.
The other thing is, Unit, Unit D garage has that door that swings into the corridor, or, or, right? And then you need to go up the stairs. From there, you can go up the stairs. So the guys that are coming down the stairs in an emergency, that door swings open, and you're not maintaining the, probably in this situation, thirty-six or forty-two inches clear, so that door can't swing in, in this current configuration.
Would it be, I mean, assuming that it met the fifty percent rule for the door swinging over it, you know, through your clearance?
I don't know, I guess you'd have to look at that, but...
It's corridors, I don't know if it's the same for stairs.
At this point, it's all...
It might be even more restrictive on stairs than corridors. Most things are.
Yeah.
But yeah, I've never seen a garage door open into a stair, so I don't...
And also, you know, you guys can check out the eighteen code rather than the fifteen.
Yep.
Yep.
Because right away, it's gonna give you some, um, some less restrictive requirements for your windows, your emergency rescue openings, if you're sprinklered. Never was recognized before, it was in the.
More restrictive or?
Less.
Less restrictive.
Less.
Okay.
And should we even have to add a single exit?
Doesn't, no, not that from, not in the IBC.
No. No, I know the IBC used to say if you use a sprinkler to allow for a single exit from a three-story building, then you can't use it. To not have your rescue.
You're gonna have a rescue opening.
But I don't know if the 18 says that or not.
Any other comments? You have any other questions for now?
There's a drainage connection for this building on the corner next to the coffee shop. If there's some pumps in the basement, can you make sure that they get routed into the right spot, please?
Would we go out the back to the drainage there?
There's no drainage out the back.
Yeah, there is, there's a pretty good sized pipe back there.
Oh, well, you have a pipe directly adjacent to your foundation now.
Oh, right there.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's bought and paid for.
Okay. Even better.
All right, you all set?
All right.
Thank you.
Good? Where's that drainage line?
It's not, I'll show them the, the plan, Zach. You gotta know it's there.
Why, another one?
It had to be there.
Another one, custom. The one next to the foundation.
Those are short, right? Pick up trucks in those garages.
Good, how are you? Julia.
All right, next up, One Congress.
He's left, we were just here. Right, David?
Yes. Here we go again.
Here we go again.
Well, good afternoon, John Chagrin from Ambin Engineering, Mark McNabb, project applicant, is here, Tracy Kozak, project architect, and Terrence Parker, project landscape architect. And we're here on the proposed One Congress Street redevelopment project for workshop meeting to get your feedback. So, first of all, there's been some discussions, let's just go up a sheet, Peter. So this is a, a boundary survey of the site, the site is, has a front on Congress Street, uh, one building, I think it's two units though wide, and then there's a interior building separation line here, and then it follows the back of the Newbury's building out, and then the property, Fee Simple, goes across almost to the garage and includes some of the, includes the real estate that is Haven Court, which does have some easements to a butters, comes back down High Street, so that is the site. It was two distinct properties divided in about this location, that's why there's two zoning designations. Mr. McNabb has merged them into one property. So there is some correspondence that has happened in regards to Haven Court, and just to be clear, Mark owns the fee interest in Haven Court, and he's interested, though, in, in working with the city. We're showing some development in Haven Court, and that development, as we get through the plans, includes some things that are important to the city. So we want to be clear that we are interested in working with the city to address what the city needs in Haven Court. But we're standing firm on the fact that the ownership of the fee in Haven Court rests in this particular property. So with that, we'll move on to the next sheet. This is just a plan showing the existing conditions, the topography. High Street is extremely flat, and if you've ever gone over there during a rainstorm, it has a significant amount of puddles. And what we'd like to do i- in this project is really provide the city with a new High Street. We have some thoughts further in the plan set that we want to discuss regarding how to accomplish that and things to do. Whether the developer is willing to spend the money to do a redo of High Street. There's a parking lot in the back currently, uh, and a wood frame, more of a, the, the building goes from the, the higher level brick to more of a wood frame, various levels in the back. So the next sheet, and then, oh, one thing I wanted to point out is that although High Street is flat, Haven Court does change in elevation. It goes up as you go southwest. Next sheet just shows the portions of the existing structures that will be removed, and then the parking lot will be taken out in favor of the next plan, which shows the project site development. So the plan is to construct a new building here, uh, leaving a separation between the Newbury's building and this building. So there would be an egress alley, uh, there would be a entrance here to a lobby, um, drop-off area so that guests, the, the project is a 45-room hotel with some other first-floor amenities. But guests would be able to come down High Street and pull in, and then there is access to lower-level parking, which is around the corner and into a, an elevator that was accessed off of Haven Court. And those would be valeted, so all the vehicles would be valeted into that subterranean parking level, it would not be public parking, it would be for guests. It shows some improvements to this area in front of the building. We're moving over a handicap spot and taking one parking spot to expand this little nook that exists there. Currently, it's about, the end of the landscaping is here, and then there's the beginning of the handicap spot here with the tip-down here. We just flipped that on the other side and moved the curb a little bit further down, give the space some more definition and some outside space for this storefront. The proposal would be to lower the curbs in High Street, the Chestnut Street approach, where they would be flushed. Currently, there are inadequate sidewalks, especially on the west side. They're impeded with, um, various things and streetlights, and so it's maybe only three feet wide at one point. But proposal would be to definitely put in a change in texture and make this a consistently wide sidewalk, and this wide also, so they would be at least six feet wide. We would show a, leaving a, uh, I believe it's 16-foot travel lane, so that allows for a sufficient width for vehicles that will be using this. There's currently vehicles that do use it, trucks that do use it to come down and deliver to the Newbury building. That will remain in place. And then we're showing some work on Lad Street, and the developer is interested in, in also off-site work from the point of the end of the ownership to Fleet Street on what's known as Haven Court and the alley behind Gillies, and Lad Street from the intersection out to Market Street. So in this plan, there's some, some of the tables, there's two zoning tables because the property is bifurcated by the zones. That's roughly, or that's exactly where the old property line used to be, so we're kind of working in two zoning districts on the lot. I don't know if you wanted to answer this one or not.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple things. I didn't hear John mention that our proposal on High Street, in order to get, you know, an adequate sidewalk on both sides, even though it's flush, adequate being like five feet wide, um, that does require to remove the four parallel spaces or whatever that are in High Street. So they're not depicted here, we're proposing to eliminate those. The loading zone will remain, um, but to make this work for pedestrians, drainage, everything we want, we'd be proposing to get rid of that. Also, just part of the history, just so that we know, we did have a Zoom meeting beginning of the year with all of staff on this project, in essence, with the same narrative that we are now. And then we did have a site walk, um, with a number of people from the city, the planning board, and Billy Beverley was there and Nick, with the same idea. So this is something that, you know, we've been all year, um, trying to advance. So it's not, it's not the first time people will have heard of this from staff in the city. And then there was also just the, uh, CD4 and CD5 separation between the two buildings. You know, that was done so that we don't have a international building code and international fire code for setback on those. And that's why they were merged, so that it's one building and treated as one building with fire code. And this project does have historic district commission approval. That's all I had to add.
Which is a good segue into the next few plans in the set are from Tracy's set, and if you want to speak to them at all, Tracy?
Sure. Sure, so the first floor at street level remains somewhat similar to, as it is now, retail restaurant. There is a lobby serving the hotel adjacent to the drop-off area.
Peter, there was a second set, I'm sorry, this is the one that didn't have the architectural, architectural plans, there was a second set uploaded.
It's, it should be bookmarked.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Perfect. Right, so Congress Street is to the right, High Street is at the top of the page. And the Congress Street buildings would be a restaurant, restaurant and bar combination. The lobby is just behind that, with, basically, the main entrance to the entire development would be through this lobby. That would be check-in. For the hotel, it could also serve as entrances to the various retail and restaurant establishments that are there. We do not have all the fire doors shown yet, but we'll be getting there. The area to the left facing High Street, that's the drop-off, and behind the drop-off would be retail or bistro-cafe type of space. And then to the far left along Haven Court is the elevator, the car elevator that was mentioned, the fire egress stair as well, and support space in the back, utilities and whatnot. There will be underground dumpsters, similar to what is being built at 60 Penhallow, and right in that area, there will be trash chutes for the Newbury's property to drop, where they currently have a surface dumpster. The dumpster would go away, and dumpsters would be provided below ground on this property with the trash chutes there to keep it out of sight.
I do want to caution on that. We don't have agreements in place, this is our proposal for J.J. Newberry. You know, they have rights, they have easement rights, they have rights to dumpsters, so this is our proposal. We are not here speaking for J.J. Newberry, this is just what we're attempting to do. They could say, we don't want that solution, we want our dumpster. My take would be, I'd probably have to allow it to stay where it is, so.
So that's pretty much it for the first floor. Second and third and really fourth floors are all pretty much the same. They each have approximately 15 hotel guest rooms on each floor, um, two stair exits, an elevator. Simple program. And the fourth floor, the, there are three small roof decks accessed by three rooms at the fourth floor level. And then the roof, uh, the left area would be used for a PV solar array, and the area on the right would be for mechanical equipment. There is stair access to the roof from the left side stairwell, and an elevator overrun is also shown. And the elevations, uh, which, as mentioned, were approved by HTC. Fully renovating the existing buildings according to historic photos, we've been able to piece together, and then tying in the new addition to match with that. And the renderings.
The next few sheets in the set speak to landscaping, so Terrence, if you want to present those.
Yeah, um, do you have the larger plan, the long one as well? From high to fleet?
Yeah.
Well, not, you didn't do one.
Yeah, that.
Can we go to that one?
Yeah, this is an, this is in, one of the original idea sheets that we showed to HTC, and I think we showed it via the Zoom meeting that we had in January, February with the, the staff. So we're trying to animate the connection from, uh, from the McIntyre Building through Commercial Alley, through Lad Street into Haven Court, down by Gillies, cross, crossing Fleet, and there's the potentiality that, um, there's a connector that goes through the block from Fleet over to the Worth Lot in Vaughan Mall. So there's, it's, there's a ton of possibilities here, and it begins with, you know, Mark wanting to animate this space and, and make all the improvements on High and Lad to mimic the improvements that we made on Chestnut Street some years ago. So my job was to animate that space, and it begins with the High and Lad improvements, but there's also a, you know, the, the pavement swirls around at the corner of Haven Court and High and Lad, right before it goes into the garage. And then if you, you step back, Peter, to that, or forward? Yeah, or go, go one forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, so you can see the corner of High, Lad, and Haven Court, and it moves all the way down to Gillies. So the, the pavement begins to be animated on High and Lad Street, and then it gets further animated at the intersection of High, Lad, and Haven Court. And then the concept at the time was to, you know, make it a more mindful, animated pedestrian passageway. And so I took the, the concept of a laborer, and I stretched it out, so you, if you follow that red path, you're kind of being, you know, really mindful. And you can imagine that kids would be running up and down that playing and jumping through that to create further animation. So that whole streetscape, we, we have, you know, green spaces and planter boxes where we can, that still allows for, you know, J.J. Newberry's to access their corner of their building and to whatever, whatever vehicles need to get into the, um, the truck, uh, the car elevator that Tracy and John mentioned. But there are sitting stones, just like there are at Chestnut Street, they're, they're scattered at particular points that don't pinch vehicular movements. So they're at the north, the, the western corner of the new building at New, J.J. Newberry's, and then there's a, a similar amphitheater space. As you're looking, I don't know if you, you know that when you're at the, the top of Gillies, you have, there's a lot of sun there, and you have a, there's a lot of sky, so there's, there's kind of a little. a little overlook, even though you're looking at Gillies, but there, you know, it's, it's a nice, nice to have a little, you know, perspective on the streets of Portsmouth. So that's going to be an animated stone amphitheater space at the top of there. So it's, it's roughly a 13, 14-foot grade change between Fleet and the top of that. So we have a series of, you know, granite tread steps that, you know, you know, so there's a, there's a platform between each set of steps. So that's, that's all going to be, you know, a really nice staircase. So it, it could have a sculpted handrail and fence that go on the edge of Gillies and the access up to the Haven Court. But then it crosses Fleet Street, and you know, it could become much, a much greater connector from the Worth to the McIntyre once this is in place. So there'll also be probably catenary lights across the top, which is in one of the sketches that we ran through quickly, the idea page. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at some point today.
All right, thanks. Back to the site.
Sure. What sheet do you want to go to?
C four, the utility. So this plan shows utility work that might be done conceptual in High Street. And so it would involve things like the replacement of the water line, replacement of a sewer line, relocation of the gas line. And right now, I believe this, there's a long sewer run that goes up to this building, so we would reconnect that with a proper manhole. The, this begins to show utilities that are sort of part of the Fleet Street reconstruction, I believe. So there'd be, there's a planned connection from Fleet Street of electric utilities to the transformers that it currently exists inside the parking garage. So we're showing that. But we're also showing the grease trap location for the proposed building, as well as the service connection from that transformer bank into this location. New water service off of the new water line. And then this begins the discussion about drainage in High Street. There's, you'll see more about it later, but we're kind of thinking about the possibility of some catch basins and some reshaping. So the next sheet is that grading plan, and we're kind of thinking about proposing to, because High Street is so flat, try to roll it up and down, so we create some high points. And at the low points, we introduce some catch basins to move the water. We would make the gutter line at that toe of the flush curb, you know, so that street would flow, slope to the middle from each side. Then there's really not a lot of change elsewise in Haven Court, pretty much keeping that same grade, but making sure that the building access points work with it. In the alley in the back, though, we are creating a grade change that would slope from the, the southeast to the northwest. Currently, there's an area that is inaccessible because of the construction that occurred in the past, and some impediments to access. There's an area there that it's very hard to get measurements in, it's impossible, and we're gonna, but that building is going away. We have looked at the foundational Newbury's building, and it can support the rising up of that grade. So it would allow for a consistent slope for both access and the movement of drainage. The next sheet is the parking level plan. That's part of the architectural set. So that just shows you the elevator and then the access down here, the parking layout. The, there's one handicap spot that is single level, and then the rest of the spaces are two-level spaces. Again, this is all valet, so it's got operators involved, not to the pub, not open to the general public. And I read in the ordinance is that the requirement for parking, first floor is exempt. The upper floors are 45 guest rooms at .75 spaces per room, so the 34 parking spaces are required. And there are 18 stacked spaces here, here, and here, and the 180A space, which gives a total of 37 spaces. So we meet the parking requirements, and no parking CUP would be required for this project. There's a couple of detail sheets, which we won't go through at this point, but if you go beyond that, we get into some of the off-site sheets. This is just a concept sheet for Lad Street. We're showing the same sort of lowering of the curbs. In fact, in this case, we're kind of going from, we'd be going from side to side and actually raising up the street a bit to make it work. I think that there is some drainage in Lad Street because there are roof gutters that come down, and the city map shows some drainage, but it's not exposed at the surface. So we'd want to talk to Public Works about how to incorporate that. But I think from a high point here, we would be looking to just, as it does now, flow it down to the catch basin here. And that's, this is just a concept to get some discussion started. The next sheet is a detail that shows the, some detailed grading of the Terrence's stepped walkway, and then a, a high point here, and then sloping the, pretty much matching what's there now. I think the, the steps would provide for a nice cadence, because it's all laid out in a uniform manner, but it works to the grades that are there. And then the next sheet is an off-site utility plan for that alley in the, going up to Haven Court. We tried to get some information from the Fleet Street plans and then incorporate the connection of utilities. And we added, added in comm communication ducts. And then we'll also, I think, be meeting with Unitil to talk about gas. But we're hoping to get a lot of feedback today and in the future to move the designs along. I don't know if anybody else has anything that they want to add at this point from the team?
All right, thank you. Who wants to start? Any questions?
Oh, sorry, we also submitted a traffic memorandum to the, to the website. Do you have any questions about that, Eric?
Yeah, I do. I was just looking through the trip generation, and, and I don't think it's going to be a major impact, but I just want to make sure it's done correctly. They're, they're using, based on urban dense areas, you know, only very few car trips for the hotel spaces. And typically, it's, doesn't apply here, because we don't have a lot of mass transit or ability to reduce the car trips from a hotel.
Okay.
So just maybe take another look at that, at the categories that they're using.
So I see you guys are proposing to install a new sewer main underneath the parking garage?
No.
No? Okay. See that there's the abandonment of sewer main underneath?
So there's a, right now on that sheet, I think it's on the High Street, so that's C four. There's a, a connection, I believe, drainage connection. That's, oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So if we were going to move the sewer to the south, then Mm-hmm. There, there's a, that line would have to, would probably want to be replaced. So I think that does show work that's in the area of the
Underneath the parking garage?
It's under the canopy.
It's under the canopy.
Okay.
Which is pretty tall in that location.
Sure.
And the utility plan still shows a parking, so that just, but they're going away, correct? On High Street?
We're proposing that.
Yeah. And then, and you realize that would take PTS and City Council approval ultimately.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we're aware that all these improvements probably end at the City Council.
It looks like proposing an ADA or loading zone on Lad Street there, that cutout?
So when I looked at the Lad Street, yeah, there's, like, there's kind of an area in front of the garage on Lad Street that we can work together on what to do with it. But it doesn't, it didn't really serve, or it doesn't serve a, a purpose, it seems.
It collects a lot of trash cans, I think.
What's that?
People like to put their trash cans out there.
Yeah, yeah.
From the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the only spot, yeah.
They still put it when it's a loading zone, though.
Yeah. So that's just a, you know, we can leave it like it is, or just a thought, maybe it would provide for an ADA parking space that could service that neighborhood, so to speak.
Mark, one of the ideas that Nancy Carmar used to have is potentially putting the lighting on High Street up on the buildings.
We're proposing that.
Instead of post-op lights.
That's wonderful you remember. That's what we were, when we said the word catenary lights. We're proposing catenary lights on all of this. So we're proposing with stainless steel cables, just like we did at Three Pleasant Street, and we're doing it at Sixty Penhallow, where they're above all the traffic height, and they'd go from building to building. That would require me to get an easement from Pierce Block to attach. But we're proposing down High Street and down Haven Court to not have street lighting and have the uniform overhead catenary lights.
What do we do per se on Haven Court where the staircase is, where there's nothing on the right-hand side to attach lighting to?
I think we have a plan, don't we, Terrence? What was the, did something come up with wrought iron or something to grab?
Well, it, it's, it's a work in progress to create
Okay.
I look forward to you come up with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, I'm thinking about it too.
You can look at Three Pleasant Street on the, if you go to the left of the building?
Yeah, I've seen it.
The poles?
Yep.
Have you seen it at night? The alleys at Three Pleasant?
Once, yeah. Laurie and I were down there.
They're spectacular.
In the fall, I think.
They're, so that would require me to be able to get an easement or a license, whatever you want to call it, from the city to attach to the parking garage for those, and then from Pierce Block and anything on J.J. Newberry, to do, to do the catenary lights.
Okay. Now, the basement plan, Tracy's not part of your, it's not, it's separated from your plan set. And I don't know if it's something John drew or not, but the water room is shown directly outside of where the sewer grease trap is. And I'm wondering if that could be relocated more on the High Street side, between the stair tower and the exterior wall?
Sure.
Because it's central to the building, and it'd be easier to get to for water utilities. So if you could look at that, that would be probably a lot easier, and then we wouldn't have the commingling of the sewer and the water running next to each other outside. Because right now, in, in John's site plan, the water line's actually showing where we're going into the electrical room, which is unknown.
It's a good change, yeah. Yeah.
So just things to think about with that.
Yeah, that electric and water room need to get flipped.
Okay.
Yep. And we just need to really take a look at the drainage system that was installed under the parking garage, that ultimately it goes to handle the street and empties into the drain manhole just down the street from Gillies. But we need to just confirm that that system can handle any additional flows. I don't know if any of these drains outside right now are going into the sewer or not, but I'm hopeful that they can handle it. I think they can, but we just need to check.
Yeah, I know everything's hardened now, you know, in terms of
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all, I understand. I just, there's things going on that are somewhat nebulous that we need to just kind of clarify. And I believe that where John is showing the drain pipe, I think there's CAT TV under the sidewalk and possibly under that side of the road already. So I'm not sure that's shown properly. I think there's other utilities, John, that are there that may be not shown on this plan. So we just need to maybe walk it and look around and just try to figure out where these corridors could be a little bit together if you want.
Sure.
Because we can move the low point.
Yep. No, I understand.
This name of the parking garage, do you know the dimensions of the car elevator? It looks short. Is it the same size as the parking spaces or the?
It is the same length that the, as the parking spaces, but we made it 50% wider to accommodate any turning off of Haven Court. So it looks shorter just because of the proportions are a little different.
And if there's a larger vehicle, someone comes in with a big car, truck, that wouldn't fit?
I believe it's 19 feet long, so it wouldn't accommodate trucks clearly, but it is designed to accommodate a handicap fan.
And then the trash, would the trash use the elevator as well to get out of the basement?
Correct.
Yes, it would.
And the spikes and scooters, would that be for, would valets handle those, or how would those get down there? Through the elevator or?
I don't believe we're there yet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 the, how we interface that and where they're available, and we don't have that detail right now.
Okay.
The parking is too deep, but also stacked?
Yeah, it's an automated system.
Oh, so that won't be
They need to have like one open so that, so they can move?
I believe they will back out and remove one car to shuffle the others around, and then they pull the one back in as needed. So there's stacking space in the aisle between the spots for one or two cars at a time while they shuffle the cars around.
But that's all automated, you know, that'll all be, be for equipment.
Yeah, so the ones we've seen that were stacked both ways, you know, horizontally and vertically, have had like one space that wouldn't be a parking space because when they move, it's like a puddle.
That makes sense.
What do they call those? The tic-tacs?
Yeah, I can't remember what they're called, but yeah.
That, that makes sense, you know, other, other than at this point where we're, we're prepared for the capital expenditure of a, of an automated parking system, you know, we're not, we're not, Patrick, at the point where of, of those type of things. I'm, I'm sure we'll need that. I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, it just may affect your parking count. I mean, you may have to lose a couple of spaces to have that, that's all.
Gotcha.
I do like the idea of the lighting on getting rid of parking and having sidewalks leveled. Gives us a lot more room for access.
It's also a lot easier for Public Works to plow down there, too, you know, when everything's one level and you're not having cast iron streetlights and it's all above head. It just, it, it makes it easier for a lot of things. It's costly to do that, but, but I'm committed to doing that. I think it's the right thing to do.
Terrence, you're gonna save the London Plain Tree at the corner of High and Congress, right?
Save it from John, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't plow it under.
Not yet, right? Well, now you're on notice.
Well, now you're on notice.
So I think, I had a couple of things, I think with regard to Haven Court. I think the city is still kind of holding a position that we do have interest in that. Bob might be joining us for that purpose. I do think also that, I wouldn't be too far out there saying that the city is looking to probably find some winnable solution for both without a big research project and a back and forth. So I don't know, Bob, do you have, have something to add to that? I know there's an interest in meeting with you separately to negotiate and talk about how that can be resolved to everyone's satisfaction. I don't think, I think what your goals are, are not inconsistent with what our goals are, and I think that there can be some reconciliation about the ultimate outcome. Do you have anything to add to that, Bob?
I agree with everything you just said. The format of how that agreement might be reached is maybe a little different between us, which is that the suggested format that came from Mr. McNabb where to the city yesterday proposed that the alleyway behind Newbury's, that hill was zoned by the city in vain and Haven Court be treated as, well, Haven Court be treated as private and the alleyway be treated as owned by the city, but licenses granted to allow the stairway, for example, that we saw there. And the improvements that, and what Mr. McNabb was saying, that if the city agreed to treat Haven Court as private, then he would grant the city the right to do something in there, you know, whatever the city might want, what you said. And my thought was actually the opposite, that Haven Court be treated as a city street and the city grant him the right to do the things within Haven Court that he wanted to. With that refinement, I think we're all in agreement that our goals are more or less common and could be resolved by agreement.
And from our position, we're here to make a difference and allow the public to come through and allow the city to do what they need to do there. The ramifications of me to do what Bob is asking, when there's a stamped licensed land survey from the city, from the planning board and from us from the planning board and it's a public way, there's a bigger ground to make up to do it that way. I can understand why Bob would want it that way. It's just, it's just, we're here to grant what the city needs. But if we make this something that it's not a city street, then our problem with all of that is that it gets into a mucky area of it being a city street and it's not a city street. So we're of the mindset, if we can reach agreement, that we're, we're here to grant the city what we need so that you don't get caught on utilities and maintenance for the parking garage and the public going through. But as soon as something's a city street, you know, then what I do subterranean and what happens and what happens with car movement and parking movement becomes a city street. And so what I want to emphasize is we're here to cooperate and create this connector in this public way. And I'm not hearing anything that the city wants or needs. I'm not against any of it. I'm all for all of it. I just don't want to make something that it's not. And so that's what we would propose. We would propose to be cooperative and do it. I think we're all after the same interests. I mean, for me to come in here and it's going to be millions and millions of dollars in High Street and Lad Street and Haven Court, it's going to be quite a big commitment. You know, it has to look respectful and all that and it, and so I think we're saying the same thing, but with that nuance where the way Bob would like it, I would not be prepared to go that way.
So I just propose that we, I just follow up with a separate meeting. I understand your position. Bob and I can absolutely share that. And then I will, whoops, follow up with a separate meeting in the next week to, with Bob and city attorney and potentially city manager to talk about.
Sounds perfect.
The other comments I have are, is that I will get back to you. I don't, my inclination is that it might need an easement, but maybe not a license for the hanging of the streetlights that you mentioned, but I'll confirm that. Also the sequencing for the removal of the, of the parallel parking spaces. We'll try and give you guidance about when we want that to be sequenced in so that you can move it forward. We are going to be looking for an easement plan separate from identifying all the easements, purpose of the easements, grant doors, grantees. We want that to be prepared as a separate document. And then we, it's really helped the projects move quicker on the other side when we have that fully delineated. And then all the easements with unique identifiers corresponding at the table so that we can help start to prepare the documents that need to go to council for approval. We find that we're moving a lot quicker on those on the other side when we start our work a little bit earlier, so help us, help you with that. And I think those are the big ones. I mean, this is just a question because I'm trying to figure out, this building height reflects the, the no variance building height.
That is correct.
That's where we're at right now. Any chance that might change, given anything that's pending right now, the pending regulations that are coming forward?
Yes. So we comply with the current zoning. The HDC's approved it for compliance. If the current zoning passes where, that we have five more feet, the stories won't change. What difference that makes though with mechanical systems and international mechanical code ventilation and being able to move air and structure is enormous.
Okay.
You know, it, it gets more costly and a worse technology the more we cram a floor. You know, we have to move more stuff through freon, we have to move more stuff through higher velocity. So you couldn't give us enough height, quite frankly, for buildings to be healthy today mechanically and all the stuff that we need to do for fire and raiding and separation. You know, every floor would want to be twelve feet, but we just don't have it. So to answer your question is we do not need to make any changes now, it all works. But if I could get more height, I'd take it.
I would just add that right now, to get to that height level, the floor levels between the old building and the addition no longer align. So we have handicap ramps everywhere. We would love to make this more accessible, inclusive, friendly by making everything level so that those who are mobility impaired don't have to.
So recognizing that those regulations potentially affect this project, you should be aware they are going to first reading next week. And I'm sure council would welcome any input you have regarding that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the trade-off you do. You lose handicap accessibility in them when you have to cram it down. But yeah, meet a historic building that's much higher. So we can do it technology-wise, but it's unfortunate.
And thank you for bringing that up. We have to be consistent with the labeling of what the building is called, so that will change.
All right, we'll see how that goes, I guess. And then we'll watch for that update if it, that's presuming it moves forward all the way through.
John, on Lad Street, where you had that cutout for handicap, do you have any survey for there? Because I think the property line might come through there as well, you know, for the property garage in Lad Street.
Yeah, we just, we didn't pay attention to right of way, but we can add that in if you want.
Sure, sure.
Yep. We just measured the corridor.
Yeah.
Any other comments or? Any other questions?
I think we're set.
I think we're set.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Sold.
All right.